I call to order the December Planning Commission meeting. Let's all stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll do a roll call. Jim?
Here.
Tom?
Here.
Blake?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
And I am here and it looks like we have two members absent. Um, I will look at meeting minutes from the November meeting. Does anybody have any comments or anything from that?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Baser Planning Commission moving minutes for November 12th, 2024. I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, minutes are approved. Does anybody have any declarations of communications or anything disclosures? To make? Nope. Okay. Um, planning directors report. Looks like we have no old business. Um, new business. Item number five, P A D M zero zero seven dash two four. A text amendment addressing the dedication of parks land and open tracks. And a public hearing will be required.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Jim Sherman, Planning Director for the City of Baser. We have been working on some texts for sometimes, actually since Alex and I probably came on board at the direction of Leslie through the city council, they'd like more trails and parks language upgraded. Not enough was identified specifically. And also we felt that some, and as you've probably read some of the texts, we wanted to be more specific with the planning commission's role. It was before we felt it was a little vague. So I've been looking at different jurisdictions, um, taking some polling, reading their, their codes. Um, and so this is, and then working with Pete, our, our land use attorney, we drafted up a much more simpler, but a more basic language. This now requires every subdivision to provide parkland. And one of the things I liked in a couple of communities, the planning commission now has a little bit of ability to now negotiate how it looks for the community. So in other words, one of these larger communities was able to compare, uh, combine with other subdivisions that may not be able to support with their land. And that's one of the things I really liked that they, they handed that to the planning commission, that ability to work and, and adjust parkland. It's not just, okay, here's 50 acres, you gotta have that. Well, I've, I've got this next door, you know, these phases also maybe kind of combine those. It will be in your hands to make those decisions to kind of better base her with more parks language. Um, one of the things, you know, and as I included in the package that Diana helped with and amended was, as you know, our citizen survey ranks trails and parks just right up there at the top. Um, we're, we're doing really well in safety, thanks to law enforcement, um, our consolidated fire district. Um, a lot of our public works, so those things ranked high, but that, that the community has turned more toward the amenity side. And so, uh, this new text language, um, open spaces. And one of the reasons why, and I appreciated Pete, our land use attorneys, um, dialogue. I started out being very heavy parks, but we also think there are other uses that might be open spaces and let the developer come to us, the planning commission with maybe some counter proposals, maybe a playground. Um, uh, one of the things I think we're going to see with the, the Dodd property out at 158th and Kansas Avenue is their, their national models, not to really provide pools, but they like to provide, yeah, um, open spaces, playground equipment. So when we get to that point, I, I hopefully that'll be something they bring forward to you for, for consideration. Um, we, we still have the, the same percentage as before. We've just increased a little bit, not actually decreased it, but by this new text language, we add more parkland to the city of Baser. Um, but still give the developers a little bit more leeway in how they get there. And so in the bottom line is the, the, the opt to pay out is no longer on the table. We, we hopefully it's just, we're not heavy with cash, but it, we much prefer the land and the dedication over that. Um, and especially a couple of these larger subdivisions that may be proposed. They're, they're a significant, I mean, anything over 500 lots, that's significant enough to, um, to provide open parks land. So I won't go through the whole staff report, but it was just basically to we, we, the direction staff has received from management was that we just don't really care to see anymore of the pay to, to, um, no longer pay for parks and that start dedicating land. And then we did create some minimum sizes. So, so those folks have a small enough. You know, they're not overburdened by losing valuable lots. Um, that's not, wasn't our, uh, and so I included the, the previous text, the strike through. And then, um, I just wanted to, then through the revised packet, we tossed in the couple of citizen surveys showing kind of where we rank. Um, uh, one of the things I did add landscaping, we like, we, I there's some smaller communities I looked over like towards liberty. It's just, it's, you have to sample to to also know, I can't, I mean, I've worked at several jurisdictions, but I like to look at some of the other communities that are like, maybe like Baser was a few years ago and where they're at now. And landscaping was one of the things that several had added to their parks that they didn't have originally. Um, we kept it fairly modest. Um, it seems to be metro wide, um, non-desiduous, like evergreen type trees are because they're hardy, they're green year round, the screening. Uh, cause some of these parks may be upright against, uh, single family houses within their own subdivision. So those are good screening methods within their own subdivision. So that's where the landscaping came from. Um, so that's kind of the staff report and then we can do the public hearing, I guess, yeah.
Do you take a motion?
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing for case number P A D M dash zero zero seven dash 24. I'll second.
Sorry. All those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Public hearing is now open. Do we have anybody online, Diana? Nope. Okay. Then I'll take a motion to close public.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for P A D M dash zero zero seven dash 24.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Hey, all those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Public hearing is closed. Comments from commissioners?
I just have a question. Uh, is there a minimum number of houses, um, that would be that would kick the, uh, kick in to cause the, uh, cause us to require park space in a development?
Oh, actually, good question. We, in the development business, we usually figure per acre you, and you figure in the infrastructure about three per acre, three dwellings per acre. Um, so at the minimum five, we're talking 15 dwelling units. Um, I don't foresee anything quite like that. We have some infill coming and they're all the ones that are talking to Alex and I are, they're exceeding like 20, 30 lots. So, um, but they also would only be, they may not even be uh, half an acre with their, what, what we used to call pocket park. Um, so that would be, but that's in the development business right now. It's three per acres about what you're getting.
And would this apply to, um, uh, developments that are already in process or in progress and just not finished yet?
Most likely no, because they've, they've performed a, a subdivision improvement agreement. So they're kind of under that. It's like when we adopt a code or something, you get till the, the date, anything in the office before that date. So, um, that's not, yeah, great.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, um, first and foremost, I, I think this is wonderful and I like to compliment city staff on bringing this to, to the forefront. This is just wonderful. I'm going to approve, but I do have a couple of questions. So
Yes, sir.
I can better understand it. Um, this is a tough question. What, what do you think developers will think with respect to this requirement? That it's not going to make anyone shy away from Baser?
No, no. Um, in fact, actually, we're probably one of the few, what I call developing communities that aren't requiring, you know, uh, even smaller ones, uh, communities in Baser. You know, if you're in the Piper area and, um, some of the smaller, so I don't believe so. Um, I'm, I'm just, I, well, I'm doing, I'm just going, he's faster than I am. I'm trying to think of the ones we have on the table now, and it would not cause any of them to shy from Baser.
I also want to compliment staff for, for the way that was presented, but the, that the text, the proposed text, but also the editor, how it played inlaid into the original text. Um, on, on the text to be revised, when it talks about recreational areas, could that also be a pool?
Yes, yes, yes.
Uh, under section B, item one requirement, it talks about reasonable size. For actual use, that's just, you, you'll know what a reasonable size is, correct?
And, and for this, this body to also, um, make sure we're doing our job, you know, I, there, there's always checks along the way. And we like to think that this, this body is an important check to staff. So if, say like we're working with a developer, that reasonable is also what you can apply to when something comes before you. So yes, I think reasonable is.
Just, just a couple of other questions, and I appreciated, uh, Commissioner Owens', uh, question about kind of how many houses on there, but it talks about 3% of the gross area. I, I'm having difficulty visioning that. Paint me a picture of a 50 lot subdivision. How large would that park be?
You, you're probably looking at somewhere around the three, two to three lot size area. And, and I, and that actually still is in our code now. It just was not. We weren't able to apply it because of the, the ability to pay out. So we really haven't seen anybody, um, you know, it took the city and great organizations like the planning commission, city council, just tomahawk does have a, but that took these bodies to help with that, that you, you. So now the developer has it before them. We don't have to rely so much on um, the great work of others. It can come at the beginning instead of waiting until it gets to these bodies. You'll just now um, interject more of what you see the vision of the, the community with that.
One question and one final comment.
That's fine.
Probably just two comments. I, I, I love the fact that when, when you presented this, you talked about kind of the, the ability to incorporate existing amenities. So all the existing parks might be able to be incorporated into some of this calculation?
Yes, e- especially if you're building next to an existing, um, because also the direction that we've been given is to start creating more links with our trail system. So one of the properties on the other side of 150th, we're working with that potential developmental link hit through his to 150th, and then also another one on the other side to link to the city center project. So within that, we're trying to also connect to open spaces that we have.
It's a wonderful segue because I, I want to really compliment the, the phrasing, all private parks and recreational areas shall be connected either by approved sidewalk or trail system to the public right of way or to the city Baser trail system. I think that is brilliant.
Okay.
Nice job.
Yeah. Thank you.
You know, just for my general education, if you don't mind. So when the developer slash declarate goes in and does this, and we pass this and, uh, they have to build accordingly. And then they get the lots sold out. Is it up to the HOA to enforce beyond that point, or does the city zoning people? How does that work?
No, that's good because it, it is something that some communities still struggle with. Um, it, it depends on the park. They can dedicate it and turn it over to the city. If the city agrees to accept it as a city park, then it would be ours. Um, if it, it's a private park related strictly to that subdivision of private open space, then that's where we have the language that we need to record that with the register deeds, with the homeowners association. We usually work with the developer on homeowners associations, what level of occupancy happens before they have to form their board. And at that point, the board will manage the maintenance of the park, playground, whatever it is. We do have a minimum property maintenance code. We hope we don't have to use for that, but it, we do have that as far as city staff. And then of course, in our codes, thanks to all, all the work that was done before Alex and I were here, we have, um, when you do have things like site plans and development plans, those don't go away, the last occupancy, they're required. You know, you can't go in now and cut down the 10 or 12 white pines you planted. You can't do that. That, that's part of their agreement. They must maintain that through either what they call an act of God, a storm or disease, but they must maintain that. So that's up to staff to make sure that the HOA board is maintaining that private park, open space.
Okay. So could you take it a step further? Say they don't maintain it. And they don't abide. How does the city enforce?
We, we would, actually, we would go back upon their original agreement and I'm sure unless the HOA becomes insolvent, um, I probably would leave that to Pete, our attorney in Somerset, but usually there's been, it goes to court at usually at some point. Um, now taking care of it, we have, it just depends on what is that needs taken care of. Um, is it just they're not mowing their spaces or is a piece of playground equipment so dilapidated, becomes unsafe? We have all kinds of tools within our, our chest that we can use on city staff. But usually eventually there is some kind of, um, legal proceeding that takes place. If there's just like that line in the sand. And we keep showing them, look, this is what you agreed to. So far, you know, I haven't, well, all my friends in some other jurisdictions, nothing like that's happened. So if the, oh, sorry. Why don't you see after oh eight, we had a couple, you know, after the recession, but those, the one in Overland Park I know of, and the one in Gardner I know of came back, new association, money's got back in. So.
Okay. Yeah. I, yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, Commissioner.
No questions. I think you guys did a great job with this. Thank you.
I just went back at what Tom said. It was so clear. I really appreciated how it was presented to us. It really made it understandable.
Good.
How it fits into the language.
Thank you.
Um, if there, anybody else have any follow ups on that? Um, if so, then I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, I'll entertain, we're all making motion that we approve case number P A D M dash zero zero seven dash 24.
I'll second.
Okay, um, I'll take a vote. Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes also. Okay, if that item passes. Item number six, P A D M zero zero eight dash two four A. Text amendment to add lot line adjustment to the subdivision regulations and a public hearing will be required for this one also.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Commissioners, Jim Sherman, Planning Director, City of Baser. Um, in, in the, um, in the land use area, not every community has it, but many of the developing communities and including Leavenworth County. They have the ability for two property owners to, um, move the property line, um, without replating. Um, boundary, it's either called lot line adjustment, more in cities and rural areas, boundary line adjustments. And what this does is, um, it's used mostly for area of land. They have a project, they need a little bit more land or they need it to comply with some kind of setback. Sometimes even utility companies drive this necessity. Um, I was a rural county director and we had a lot of times, um, I didn't know this, the state has how many ag cows you can have per acre? And so some farmers in Douglas County were moving their lot line so they can increase their herd size without having to go through the entire plating process. Um, now, so Baser didn't have that. And we noticed when we, as you've just recently heard the Zarda, um, potential PR, there was a couple of little notches on the bottom side of the golf course that um, if we'd had this, it would have made their, their process a little easier. Um, it's not that they couldn't do it, but it's, it's a tool that we would like to have for, um, people who own land here to use. Uh, they have to be platted. It's not for unplatted land. So they're, that way they do have to plot. In other words, this is only for complying lots that are, or real estate that would like to move the lines. And it's, and you can't fall into non-compliance with this either. In other words, you can't make your lot, if you want to help your neighbor, yours can't be smaller than what's allowed for that zone lot. Or your setbacks can't change or your lot area. Um, uh, I've had some experience with it also for, it was to assist in stormwater drainage. Uh, there was some work done, um, in another community where we had lot line adjustments, and this helped them from having to go through the plating process. They just worked out an agreement and moved the property line. So it's not a really big deal. We may not even use this for the next year or two. Or we may have three people want to, um, come in and, and use this, but it's a nice tool to have. Uh, we'll, we'll look a lot like the rest of Leavenworth County by having this, um, in our, um, in our ability to apply. So um, it's pretty straightforward. There's not much to it. Um, it's, it's mu- and, and why we put it in lot splits, because lot splits are another administrative function. Alex handles lot splits. There are, we do a review and then basically they're recorded with the register of deeds. So this is a much similar process.
I still need to open the public hearing, don't I? Okay. I take a motion, please, for opening the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I make the motion to open for a public hearing, consideration of case number P A D M zero zero eight two four.
I'll second.
Um, take a vote, Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Public hearing is open. I'm assuming we don't have anybody else on, Diana? Okay, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I make the motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The public hearing is closed. Jim, do you have anything you'd like to comment on?
No.
What about you, Tom?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Of course. How does this, uh, I like all of this. This is wonderful. And again, thank you for the format. How does this make it easier administratively for both staff as well as for the property owner?
Good question.
I think you, you mentioned it.
No, that's a great question because that's actually how this, the word easier is exactly what it is. It's just to make it easier for applicants who are in compliance, not to have to go through the full plating process, which could be almost 60 days. Um, this is something, if they have their act together with a engineering firm, a land engineering firm, they can submit the documents. Alex will probably do a review pretty quickly. If it's in compliance, they can get it recorded to the register and they're off and running. Um, whereas the plating process does the same thing, replating. It's just that that's a statutory time delay. And this, this would not be, this would be the, um, the landowner's own emphasis, how much they really want it, it's how fast they can have it done.
Yeah, I thought, I thought you were going to answer my second question. When Alex does take a look at it and what, for whatever reason he denies it, what's the recourse for the property owner to, to try that again? Or to, to challenge the, the decision?
Good, that's, so it's typically like with the lot splits now, um, generally it's for, um, an identification error problem. Most of the times why we deny them. Um, they misidentify the lot area or their zoning or that it, it's mostly that they the biggest thing Alex will be doing is verifying the lot sizes and setbacks, which aren't really going to be too much debatable because we can show them, hey, this is the, this is the statutory lot size, this is the statutory setback. Um, but when he does lot splits now, those are the things that and they, and generally they make the corrections and come back in. I haven't had anything, um, goes to that level. I mean, they, I mean, if, I, I guess if there's something in line and saying, I can't, I can't even foretell a, a, in a good event, but they could, they do have the ability to go to court if they want. I mean, uh, district courts always there on anything with this, this level of work. So I always, I'm attorneys have been good or bad. I've always been, you know, bro, you're, that's America's right. If you don't agree, you should have a pellet and that's a good way for them.
Mike, do you?
I don't.
Hey, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve, uh, case number P A D M dash zero zero eight dash 24.
I'll second.
Okay. Take a vote, Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That motion passes. No reports from special committees. Um, is there a development report?
Sure, real quickly, um, we're still in, in a lot of discussions with many projects. Uh, the one I referenced off of 150th and infill, um, the big one out south is the Dodd property. Um, there's a, the hidden ridge is their next two phases are in, um, the final construction review. Um, we just broke ground up at Falcon lakes for the, the, the fourth plat of the boulders. So it's between two fairways. It's not the Villa side. It's on the, what I call the traditional house side. Um, Alex receives quite a few calls on smaller projects. Um, we have, we have approved the fairway plat, um, a fairway site plan. Their building plans are about done. Um, we're working with the high school right now on their addition. It's very complex because as I, and, and they, they can't help it. I mean, you, you build on, you build on, but it's about one of the worst spots you can build because all the utilities run through that side. So, um, part of that project is the immenseness of relocating everything in a temporary nature so they can build and then reconnect. Um, you know, you'll see our, our house, our housing numbers are up and they're still going up. Um, you know, if I, I can't foresee the future, but um, it looks like next year will be quite a robust year. I, I don't, I just, when I'm in the field, listening to the, um, discussions. Um, that's kind of where we're at. Um, and then of course tomorrow night, the, the recommendations from this body goes to the city council. Um, and so I haven't had any more really discussion. We just let the developer know, the potential developer know about tomorrow night. Um, we have some more texts to bring to you. Uh, hopefully we'll have it for January. Um, we're, things like trash enclosures aren't really well defined in our, it's exciting stuff, I know, but it's not just, it's, yeah, it's just not well defined in our code. And with the the, the modest commercial that's happening, we would like to take, we, we don't have any problem with fairway. They're, they're very good. Um, the high school's been very good, but, um, and then we, we have a zoning category maybe to bring forward too, to help um, clear up some, um, identification for when we bring raw land into the city, how we do that. Uh, I think it puts this body at a terrible disadvantage at times by already identifying it as estate lots or what, you know, if they really don't know what they want to build. Um, so we'll bring that first in discussion. And so hopefully we will have a January planning commission. Um, the other one that's moving forward is the, um, Um, the other one that's moving forward is the, um, it's called Bobcat Woods, Soft Parallel. Uh, Andy Suber has it and we're, and, and you, the TIF was approved, so they'll say you have lacking now is a public hearing. And once that public hearing is going, Andy would like to get started, so he can have lots ready by spring, summer. I, I don't know if that's possible, but that's their ambition. Um, so I think next year will, like I said, will be quite robust and we anticipate once fairways, broken ground, the land along that strip there will, will be in play. Um, so, and we'll, we'll keep this body well informed. Um, you'll see something from Alex and I here in about two weeks, um, where we're at on projects and an update and um, this kind of an overall review of what we're, what we're doing, so. And always feel free to call if you have a question. So, thank you.
Okay. Um, I'll ask for a motion. To adjourn?
Me?
Okay.
Madam Chair, will I make the motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Hey, let's vote, Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.